All right, call the meeting to order at 6:30. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Present.
Present.
Presence. All right, all the trustees are here. Mayor reports. Yeah, sorry. We know it's hot. I guess it's a good average or good a sales pitch for our new village hall. Come along and um I'll make sure you can all hear me. So again, no real report other than the fact I really like we realized that this is the last meeting before September 11th. So just to make sure that we recognize that that date's coming up. I believe it's on a Monday this year. Other than that, we don't really have any mayor report this week. Do we have anybody that signed up to address the board? Mary?
No.
No? Okay, moving along. Consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda, although I want to clarify the item number three should be August 25th, not August 24th. So that's Friday. So is there any request to remove any of these items from the consent agenda? All right.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
With the noted exchange to August 25th.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second trustee Peterson, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 I.
Yes.
All right, six voting yes, motion carries, regular business, consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of 666,012 and 96 cents. I have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion trustee basic, second trustee Peterson, any discussion on the on the payout? All right, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 I.
Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries, administrators report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Construction update on the project across the street. It has been rather slow starting, mainly due to utility relocations and necessary, basically, we need ComEd to move some power lines. We did start some excavation along Main Street. One of the first things that's going to happen is the relocation of a sanitary interceptor. We ran in very large pieces of concrete. You can kind of see them through the fence. They're about half the size of a car. We have to bring in some different equipment to move those and break those pieces up. So that's in progress. But but basically, the the slow start has been a result of the utility companies, AT&amp;T, ComEd, Comcast. We still don't have anything from Comcast as to what they're doing, how they're moving, what it's going to cost. We harass them. Just know that we are not sitting here just waiting. We are doing everything we can. So is the contractor and the subcontractors. Try to get this to happen, but we're anticipating what we're being told by ComEd that they are going to get out of the way. And hopefully, you'll start to see piling, start to being driven and excavation starting. And and I'm hoping that begins next week. I'll give you as much information as I can, but that that's what's going on with that. We are, I think it's worth noting to the board that we are exploring a change to the window openings in the cafe building. They had those service windows that are very much what you'd see in a drive-through in a fast food place. And we're exploring the possibility of a wider, more open service pass-through. That would just be, I don't know if people will be able to sit at it, but we're looking at possibilities of doors that either open to the side or open up. So we're exploring that. When we get a little definition on that, I'll report back to the board. It would probably result in a change order. It will probably be more money, but I think the look of it will be better and the just the functionality of it may be better. So just so you know, we're looking into that. Any other questions about the project across the street here? Um, the clarifier is still moving along. I'd hope to have it online by now. Some of the equipment was installed. They have to complete the rest of the equipment installation and then grow out the bottom and we should be good to go. So I think the final pay request from J.J. Henderson is been submitted, should be on the next meeting, but the project's moving along. We have had some success in securing some easements for Grim Road and its property. We are in conversation with KUNIS. So that was kind of a difficult meeting to arrange, but we did get it done and we're working through our issues with them. And I'll report back to the board. He has some conditions for a land dedication and we have some issues with the agreement we need to work through. It was all predicated on a dealership that he was going to build back in 2017, which of course didn't get built. So there's going to have to be an amendment to the agreement with KUNIS. The North Avenue crossing is kind of been a thorn in my side, certainly. Lake County wants improvements to that grade crossing and they're basically at odds with Canadian National. Canadian National made the intersection rough or not as easily traversed. Lake County, they also created a drainage problem up there. As you know, we don't have jurisdiction over North Avenue at that location. So it's really a deal between Lake County and Canadian National to do whatever improvements need to happen at that grade crossing. Right now, they're attempting to get Canadian National to fix it. I think Lake County is going to engineer it. They're going to have some kind of an arrangement. And I'm trying to get our quiet zone improvements done at the same time under their arrangement, their contract to be built with their improvements. I was going to use delineators since it was way cheaper and faster. If there is a way to install the permanent concrete median and it comes in at a reasonable price and it can happen in a reasonable timeframe, you know, I may go back the other direction on it, but more to come on that. I'm hoping we're told that work may possibly be in September. So there will be another closing up there, but hopefully the intersection will be improved and smooth and safe. But yeah, the quiet, the quiet zone is my main focus. The quiet zone actually expired about a year ago. FRA controls it and they are threatening to make the trains blow the horns again, which would be a big deal. So we're hoping that doesn't happen. We're going to do everything we can. It's one quiet zone. So if if North Avenue doesn't qualify, they're going to blow horns through the entire county and all 10 communities. So we don't want to be those people that cause that to happen. It will cause a lot of complaints if that happens, but it's beyond our control and I'm doing everything I can to get that necessary improvement done to keep the quiet zone intact. Our assistant administrator and our code enforcement officer will be starting on Monday. So we'll make sure to introduce you to them and get them onboarded and we can start to expand what we're doing around here. So I'm happy that they're coming. And then just to remind everybody, Chamber Golf outing is this Friday. It may still be spots available, so. It's 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 the mayor's tournament, right?
Yes.
The mayor's cup.
About 10 of them, I think.
Anyway, are there any questions? Me?
Questions?
All right. Uh, thank you, Village Clerk. No reports. Department, report communications. Jim?
Good evening. I'll be quick. Just a couple of public relations highlights I wanted to point out. At the beginning of the month, as you guys are aware, we had the help for Huntley benefit at the last Thursday night concert. And just better.
Yeah.
So at our last Thursday night concert, we had a benefit for Huntley, the 10-year-old who was injured over the summer. And we got some really good public relations publicity out of it. Mark did a really good job bringing the local business community together to do a fundraiser. And that was noticed by, we were on the front page of the New Sun and the Lake County Journal. And we were also able to get on Channel 7, ABC 7, that night, which is the most watched 10 p.m. newscast. So that was a big, good PR push for the village. Also today, I don't know if you've noticed, the cannabis signs are are up in front of the dispensary. So one of the things I'm working on is an FAQ page to the website to answer public, the public's questions about what what is going on up there. And we'll be doing a social media push with that also. And then just a reminder, tomorrow morning, get your garbage cans out an hour early. Root's going to be out starting at 5:00 a.m. Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Questions? All right, thank you. Next is Parks.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to give you a recap on our summer at Parks and Rec. We had a great summer at day camp. There were 467 children attended day camp. 296 of them were residents, 171 were non-residents. The Aqua Center will be open weekends until Labor Day, then close for the season September 5th. This year, pool passes, our pool passes, we sold 137, a family of three, 263 pool passes for a family of four, 146 individual passes and 26 senior passes. The amazing staff taught 278 children how to swim or perfected their swim skills. Of that 278, 177 were residents of Antioch. The Aqua Center also hosted two special events. They had a 70s, 80s, 90s party with a DJ and plenty of giveaways. Approximately 75 people attended that. And then a couple next, the next month was their luau with Barefoot Hawaiian, provided dancers and singers. And 120 people attended that event. Very happy with that. The farmer's market across the street will go until September 14th. We hope we are open tomorrow. So we hope that everyone still comes out even for that quick minute to get your produce. The food truck festival grew in popularity due to the additions Marissa had done. She started to add a bounce house, a balloon artistry and musical entertainment. By the August festival, we started out with only four food trucks. She had 11 food trucks participating. So that was very exciting. And lastly, we crowned our three new queens to represent Antioch. Miss Antioch is Leila Salata. She is a senior at Antioch High School. The junior miss is Zoe Babbin. She is a freshman at Antioch High School. And our little miss is Autumn Mish, who is a first grader at Hillcrest.
Thank you.
Any question?
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Danny, Public Works.
Good evening. Thank you. Uh, right now, some of the things that we're working on currently sidewalk removal and replacement on Ida and Highview. Once Ida, Ida's kind of a big undertaking. Once that gets closer to being complete, we'll review other areas that we have up with the schedule for some other locations and other subdivisions. Unfortunately, crews had to do some work on the wetland boardwalk over off of Skidmore last week. It was badly vandalized. Um, the crew spent three days there, came back Monday to do a garbage run and noticed that half of the work that they did was tore down again. So they spent another day and a half repairing it Monday, Tuesday. So some local resident brought it to our attention last week, so I didn't know if any of you were notified of it. This week, in the water department, we have a contractor that we hired. We're doing two water tower interior cleanings. Just natural sediment and minerals from the water that get trapped with inside the sphere. It's usually, we'll do it three to five years. This is the first year that we're utilizing a contractor. We used to do it in-house. It was a little bit of a project for us since we didn't have all of the equipment to do it. So that's occurring. That's at IDI Water Tower and the tower near Raymond Kia. We recently had two large water main breaks on Drumport. They both happened within 24-hour time period from each other. We're uncertain why. One of them was a pretty large-sized hole that was blown into the pipe. The crews did a good job to quickly respond to that and get everyone back online. I know people were without water for or low water pressure for a while, so. Uh, one of the big items is well nine during July, I think it was July 27th, in the middle of the night or late in the day, we experienced some bad storms and lightning. We think that lightning struck somewhere close by or the building, our well nine. We had some electrical BFD drives, which are a drive that slowly introduces the electric to the motors. That had blown some skater. And once we got those electrical issues on board or repaired, we fired the well back up and encountered that the pump is not running properly. So I just finished preparing a request for proposals, which should go out and I'll report back with a cost. Basically to pull the pump and then we have to have the pump taken to a shop and tore down and tested and figure out what exactly is the problem. It could be the electrical power feed that goes down to the pump or it could be the pump. So that'll be, that'll be coming up here shortly. That's all I have. If you have questions.
Questions, trustee Pierce?
I noticed on the bills tonight that Public Works pays an outside service to do their testing of their water quality and stuff in the treatment plant. Is that correct?
Yeah, we utilize ACE analyticals for the water and then there is a company that does the wastewater treatment plant also. We do some in-house, but some of the testing for the wastewater treatment has to go out to outside facility.
Is there a possibility of saving money doing it all in-house?
I would have to look into it, but I believe it's required through the EPA to have certain things tested by a third party. I know it is with water.
Okay. I'm just curious because one of my former lice when I wasn't staying at Holiday Inn Express, I did the repair on the equipment in my water testing labs and the sewer treatment plants and a lot of them took care of all their own stuff.
It all depends on, there's different type of treatment facilities, whether it's water or treatment. I could get a detailed report, but like Jim mentioned, it has, some of them have to be done by a certified lab.
Okay.
But we do, we have a lab within the treatment plant. We do do testing in there, but yes, there is, there is sent on.
Okay. And then then in in honor of trustee Masek, why aren't there cameras at this time in the brook so we can keep track of stuff like that? Because there's, there's always events that take place.
In the wetlands?
In the wetlands over the boardwalk. So you can see what.
I could, I could talk to the individual that works with cameras and see if there's a possibility and object number and report back.
Okay, I'd appreciate it because that seems to be a common source of issues over there.
Thank you. All right, anything else? All right, trustee reports. Any trustee reports over here on this side? Any trustee reports over here on this side? All right, then I would ask for a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second, motion trustee Peterson. Second trustee Bluthart, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 I.
Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries, meeting's adjourned at 6:48. We're going to move right into the committee hall meeting tonight. So call the meeting to order at 6:48. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Present.
Yeah.
Present.
Presence. Move right along to regular business. The first item on the agenda is Hitchcock Design Parks Master Plan Action Plan. Doug Fair is here from Hitchcock to present that report.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to turn this so I can kind of see what you're looking at. So, all right, good to be here again in front of you to report on the progress with the master plan. It seems like forever ago, we drove up here for the kickoff meeting during an ice storm, especially on a day like today. But we're going to be moving through this information here pretty quickly. Just kind of want to hit the highlights. You should have everything in your packet. So we're going to give board members and staff a couple of weeks to kind of take a closer look at it. If there's any feedback that you have from that review, I'd certainly love to have it as we look to wrap up the master plan, bring it back for adoption later this year. Next slide, please. So tonight's recap will be going over the envision phase update and the prioritize phase, focusing primarily on the action plan and then discussing next steps from there. Next slide, please. So just a quick recap on where we're, where we're at or where we started and where we're at now. Everything that's grayed out is what's been completed. So the analyze phase and the connect phase is behind us. The analyze phase being the the initial findings, demographics analysis, park visits and inventory benchmarking. And then connect phase, the online survey, workshop, the community input meetings. So kind of hearing from the community, I'm trying to determine what we're seeing as the primary needs for the Parks Department. And so, so now we, from there, we moved into the envision phase, which consisted of developing some strategies to address what those needs are. Working with staff to confirm and, you know, to update those accordingly and ranking those, or not necessarily ranking, but categorizing those into parks, facilities and program events, other. Next slide, please. So first, we started with an internal, you know, visioning session, putting together those strategies. Again, I dread preparing the preliminary needs, what we're seeing from the first two-phase findings. And then developed strategies for the parks, facilities and the open, I'm sorry, parks and open space and the programs, events and other. So those are the preliminary, preliminary needs, you know, that we'll, we'll kind of go over here in a little bit for the parks. Next slide. Pretty, pretty straightforward with the facilities, indoor, additional indoor space needed, program of indoor space and looking for property acquisitions as well. And then looking at what we're seeing as some of the key needs for programs, events and others as well. So with that, we, we moved into developing some objectives for what we're seeing that need to be addressed in the the comprehensive plan and the strategies that are proposed. So those primary objectives, seven of them are, are to improve accessibility at village parks and facilities, expand and improve connectivity through the village, improve program offerings to align with community expectations, improve existing park and amenity assets to align with community expectations, expand and add offerings at existing parks to serve increasing community needs, expand the indoor usage space and then addressing underserved village planning areas and demographics. Next slide, please. So objective number one, again, within each objective, we've developed some strategies, which you'll see in the action plan here in a little bit. But the the strategies that follow under objective one is to develop an ADA transition plan for the village for both the park and the facilities. Next slide. Evaluate and improve points of entry at indoor facilities consistent with, you know, accessibility improvements. Next slide. Under objective number two, first strategy is to develop and update and implement the village-wide trail plan. And then next strategy is to consider partnerships with appropriate agencies to support and share responsibilities to improve connectivity within the village. Next strategy under objective two is to develop and implement a trail signage program. And then add supporting amenities along existing or new trails. Objective three, to improve program offerings that align with community expectations, improving communication tools and community outreach, outreach methods to residents. Expand program offerings to address these increasing needs. Slide. And then also continue to strengthen partnerships with other village agencies, school districts and the library and to help support expanded program offerings. Next slide, please. Objective four, update the park and the park and maintenance and safety plan and develop a playground and renovation schedule over the life of the action plan, which is five years, and then breaking those out into priority groups A, B and C. So A, you're addressing early on in the plan, B, kind of halfway through, and then C, you're kind of pushed towards the end, but are planned for within the life of the plan. Same thing for developing a field and court renovation schedule and noting what the useful life for those existing amenities are and prioritizing those into groups as well, kind of same format. Next slide, please. And then same for shelter renovation for parks, so it can help with the budget for each year and developing those, creating priorities for each of those. Next slide. One more. And then develop and update the facility and infrastructure, maintenance, renovation schedule for kind of bigger ticket items, more, more important items you want to address specifically within your existing parks. And then specifically, rather than kind of addressing each, you know, amenity individually or in a group of amenities, focusing on, you know, key park improvement areas or key improvements to parks. So developing and implementing a master plan update for Centennial Park. So that consists of design and engineering, obtaining and securing funding and then bidding and constructing it kind of from start to finish. Same with develops a sawmill improvements master plan as well. Slide. And then develop new or updated park improvement plans for higher use amenities. The items listed there. And then under objective five, still evaluating locations for new pickleball courts that align with the park master plans that are in place. It'll be part of the the action plan or the the comprehensive plan. You, new improvements and supporting facilities and then increasing the diversity of amenities and offerings at parks by adding new features or replacing existing features that that are get lower level of use with kind of more updated, more dynamic and exciting amenities. Last, under objective five is to add or expand structures, infrastructure and supporting features, the various, prevent very special event use. Objective six focuses primarily on indoor space. So that's evaluating the existing facilities to improve current use, exploring the potential for indoor, additional indoor space and then explore other village vacancies, other village vacancies for properties and facilities expansions. And then last, objective number seven, addressing the underserved population or planning areas of the village. So evaluating some property acquisitions with some of the planning areas where there's a geographical kind of level of service gaps currently. And then looking into and exploring some, some mobile recreation opportunities, kind of event, event offerings specifically in those you kind of underserved or kind of planning area gaps. All right, so that kind of, kind of puts a cap on the envision phase and now we're into the prioritize phase where we've established the strategies. We know what wants to be done, but now it's how do we prioritize those and forecast those out over the life of the plan? So what you see up on screen here, and you should have some handouts with you as well, is essentially going to be the nucleus or kind of the focal point of the adopted master plan. It aligns with your fiscal year. It starts with the current year, you know, when you, when you adopt the plan. So a lot of these initiatives that we have on the front end are already, already in place. And then it starts with year one, again, aligning with your fiscal year for the next five years. And it even addresses some just beyond five years. Maybe some items that you necessarily don't want to commit to right now, but you know, they're kind of on the radar and are down the road when you look to update the master plan when your five years are up. Nothing that we're showing here is final. This is really just a starting point. We'll continue to obviously gain your feedback and then work with staff to align this with, and it basically, so the end result is that you have an attainable plan that aligns with your yearly budgets. We'll put some high-level costs to these, these action plan items and see how that stacks up with your yearly budget. So then what you end up adopting is something, a planning tool that you, that you revisit kind of on a year-by-year basis, kind of see what was accomplished. But it's, it's very much intended to be a plan that's developed by staff and the community and is very much attainable. So what you see here, there's a couple enlargements that follow. We're categorizing or color coding them by starting with parks and recreation or parks and open space being green, blue is facilities and then red is kind of the catch-all for programs, events and others. Skip ahead a couple slides. These are just some enlargements. Kind of showing a start to finish. So you have kind of an understanding of the timeline for each of the strategies that we went through. Then you have some reoccurring items, not necessarily ones that have start and finishes kind of timeframes to them, but they're, they're kind of ongoing throughout the life of the planet and even beyond. Next slide. So next steps from here, I think I already mentioned, you know, get, get your feedback, work with staff to prioritize, kind of move stuff around on the action plan. Confirm that. Once we have those confirmations in place, then we move into the last phase, which is the implement phase where we move into the booklet preparation. We've been doing a little bit as we go. So like the analyze chapter and the connect phase chapters are for the most part done. But then we kind of wrap that all up in the implement phase. And the next time you see me, we'll be at your September meeting where it'll be a draft booklet review. We're not going to go with a quick page through. Again, it'll be a high-level review. You'll have the booklet again to take a closer look at. And then we look to capture all final updates. And then we look to capture all final updates from from board, from staff and bring that back to your, bring the final version to the October meeting where you can formally adopt it at that time. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions or comments.
Alright, questions on this side of the room? Comments, questions? Questions, comments here?
Did you forget about Peterson Park?
What's that?
Peterson Park.
Peterson Park. We bought a whole piece of property there that's not going to get developed. You forgot about it? This is a no for me. Peterson Park, which is Heron Harbor's Park. You didn't even put it in there. Peterson Park.
We, yeah, we addressed some of the.
Peterson Park. I'm a no, zero no. That's a big, Heron Harbor has no park. Peterson Park's a big no. I'm a no. I don't even know why we're paying this guy for Heron Harbor. We bought that prop. Hold on. Ed's talking.
Inappropriate.
Ed's talking. We bought that their property. You gotta develop it. Can't sit there undeveloped with trees just laying down on the property. This does not address Peterson Park. We bought two parcels of property at Peterson Park.
It's under, when you you see Peterson Park as part of the renovation, as one of the parks, that is part of.
I think I think I see it as objective four on it's group A. Is that right? Is that one of them?
This is a lot of. There's no plan of, we're gonna, I'm gonna, but there's no objective to how we're going to get there. Peterson Park's going to sit there for the next 10 years with nothing there. I want to know where we're, when we're going to do Peterson Park, when we're going to get there. There's no maintenance schedules in here. It's all about we 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 put this plan together, we put this plan together. And you can, you can frown at me all you want. I I don't care. I don't care. But Peterson Park, we've been promised to park in Heron Harbor for 30 years. Nothing's been done. Kids are walking 59. And if you want a kid hit by a car on 59, that park's important to people in Heron Harbor. Sorry. You can roll your eyes all you want. That park's important and it's not in here. It doesn't say Peterson Park. We bought two parcels this year and it should be in this in this program.
Alright, so I do see Peterson Park mentioned. I think. One of the things that, Mary, I haven't read this whole thing yet because I know we got some of this today. Was there any? Did we put anything in there for the property at 59 that we acquired last year from Petersons? Do you guys have that in there yet?
Labeled under Peterson Park.
That's part of Peterson Park, that one. Okay, so the 59 property. Okay, so. Alright, I think, yeah, obviously the village acquired the property with the idea of connecting Heron Harbor to downtown. So we will end the other Peterson Park and you making that into another facility. So we will make sure that that's one of the items that's addressed in this plan. But again, I know this is a starting starting place and then we move forward through. So I'd ask, you know, some of this came today. I came today, so I'd ask the trustees to review this again. Send any questions to myself, Mary, Hitchcock Group. So that we can, when we come back in September, if that's the next meeting, you know, have some feedback on it. I have trustee Pierce with a question.
Well, since I was skipped over in the rush to get to Peterson Park. I just want to say, first of all. This is all great and beautiful and Peterson Park is in here. It may be a little sub, sub bullet saying, and the property that's important to connect it to Heron Harbor. But it is in here here under priority group A and objective four for improved existing park and amenity assets to align with community expectations. So Peterson Park, if that is the sub bullet, is in there as a priority and it's priority group A. But more importantly, there are a lot of items in this list. That as we discuss this, we need to identify funding sources because right now. This is all pie in the sky until we get more money coming in. So along with giving us the plan, we need some sort of plan to get towards the funding. Which is very important.
Understood. This is very much a starting point. Once we get the, you know, the annual budgets to work within, we'll put each of these strategies, we'll put high level costs to them. And then that'll that alone will generate some some moving around of pieces to make sure that it is aligning with your. With your assets or your your expectations, your, it's a feasible plan in the end. And part of each strategy, like for master planning a park, for master planning Centennial, not only design and engineering, but also, you know, obtaining and securing funding for that. Is an outlined initiative because we know that there's, there's a lot that goes into it. And and if there is any any additional objectives or strategies that need to be added in to to fill any gaps. Now is definitely the time to do that because we can certainly add those in and adjust accordingly as we move to finalize in the next couple of months.
Any other questions? Any questions? Alright, thank you for your presentation and.
Thank you.
Alright, next item on the agenda is item two, nine one nine Main Street Development Agreement and facade grant request. Michael Garrigan and Mark Schurrler are going to present different portions of this. On this item, I am going to recuse myself from this discussion as my office has represented. Both parties at different times through this. So I'm going to turn over the gavel to Scott Pierce and I'm going to leave the room for the discussion and then.
No, we're not going to come get you. Alright, so who's going to present once he leaves?
Good evening. So the application that I'm going to be presenting to you guys tonight is for a new business incentive agreement. This is based, you know, meant to be discussion for for tonight's purposes. Fifteen Lakes location was brought to the board for conversation back on June 28th, 2023. That meeting was to discuss preliminary concepts of the restaurant, the menu. Some questions were were asked about what they were looking for as far as incentive. Dollar amount. Those final numbers weren't or finalized at that time, so there was no money that was presented at that time in that meeting. It seemed like for the most part, the conversation was was going in the right direction, other than obviously having somewhat of a budget. Since that time, they have finalized a budget and a cost estimate for doing the build out of the building. The applicant fifteen lakes located at nine one nine Main Street is seeking a business incentive grant in the amount of $119,949. To renovate the existing building that was an embroidery shop to end up becoming a high end gastro pub. The total build out for that space is estimated at $599,743. That includes the first floor and the basement as well as built in restaurant equipment. Fifteen Lakes will be coming back to the board if this is approved at some point to consider a liquor license. Gaming is not something they're interested in having. That was discussion back on the the 28th of June as well. They have not changed any of their decisions on that. So they were are looking for obviously incentive grant at this point. They will be coming in from front of the board for a liquor license for for consideration. But just understand there is no gaming that will be involved in that. Mr. Basile and Mr. Cahoon are here today. They currently operate two businesses in Antioch, one being fifteen lakes butcher shop, which is at 346 North Main or North, North Avenue, I saw, I'm sorry. And as well as fifteen lakes food truck. Both have been given high reviews from the residents and have no issues that have been addressed whatsoever for the two businesses that are currently residing in Antioch. This agreement would incorporate payback provisions as done in the previous revisions or agreements with other businesses in town. Based on a five year clawback, which is typical with what we've been doing at 20% rate each year. After five years, that that provision is no longer needed. Are there any objectives to from the board to place this resolution for approval for a business incentive grant in the amount of 119,400 or 949. For the property commonly known as nine one nine Main Street on the next agenda for consideration. I also would advise that if there's any specific requirements that the trustees would like to see in that agreement. They could let us know now or or consider it so that way, once it's drafted by Village Council, that it would be in that agreement. Any questions that you have for me at this point?
Before we do that, do the applicants want to say anything? Alright, let's start with trustee Berman. Do you have anything?
No, not at this time.
Just a clarification. In the in the packet, we have. The first few pages reference a facade grant in the amount of 68,893.
Yeah, that'll be.
That is eliminated? That is inclusive of this?
That'll be, so basically if this goes forward, then the facade grant would be the next step to it. But that would be with the building owner, not with the actual current tenant or the tenant going in there.
So total, you're, they're looking at almost $200,000.
It'd be two separate, yeah, grants, yes.
Trustee McNeil. Can you, just because I'm newer at this, I'm familiar now with your facade grant program from other businesses that have come forward. But can you briefly explain the business incentive, just the difference between that or how that works?
Sure. So the business incentive grant is designed to entice businesses coming in. Help businesses that are needing some type of economic funding. It is something that is, there's typically a percentage that is is looked at in multiple ones that we've done through different businesses. Ranges, I think, from 10 to 15% depending on kind of what tax revenue is going to come in, generation. You know, income for the city and also obviously foot traffic into the to the downtown district. So they are kind of done on a. Project by project basis. But so there's, there's more, each one is kind of on their own. There's no specific details, but.
Did you say this one was 20% or did I miss here?
It, what, to the incentive?
Yeah.
So typically they're 10 to 15%, depending, I think it was up to 20%, but it's typically in that 10 to 15% range.
My inquiry, but that's all.
Yep. Trustee Mason.
How many square feet?
The building itself is like 1405, I believe. Just under 1500 square feet.
How many people are going to sign?
The the current drawing that they had was going to be somewhere around 40 to 50 people.
50 people?
Yeah.
How many entrances?
There's two. There's one on the front, one on the back.
What's the back?
The back goes right into the, to the, to the public park and in the back of.
Kitchen?
I I don't know. The kitchen, I believe, is going to be on the side of it. Yeah. So there's still a pass. What's that?
You don't exit.
No, you will not exit to the kitchen.
So my question is, with the amount of people per square footage, I don't think this meets the safety code.
So the the drawing that they have currently right now is.
The safety code.
Yeah.
The amount of people per square foot.
Sure.
I don't think this meets it.
So this will go, if if this moves forward, this will go through approval from the fire marshal, look at the the safety, life safety.
I want to know that before it hits the board, if this meets the life safety code.
Okay, yeah.
They have two entrances. One can't be to the, to the, to the kitchen.
Correct.
And the square footage, the amount of people in the in the room has to meet the life safety code. That's always presented and never presented at a board meeting. And and before it hits the agenda, I want to know if it.
Sure.
Proves the life safety code.
I will, I will clarify that next to this.
Meets even even thinking of putting this on for approval.
Yeah.
If this meets the life safety code.
Sure.
Because we're going to have whatever they said at a bar and 63 tables, what they said last time, it's not going to meet the life safety code.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, I I understand. We've talked about the original drawing they had, which I think was a little bit.
No, but it's all, it's skewed from what they presented last time.
Sure.
This does not meet the life safety code. They're way outside the amount of people in the life safety code for the square feet because the square foot. When you take the kitchen, kitchen is not part of the square footage. The square footage is the actual dining area.
Yep.
Would not meet the life safety code.
I will have that number for you before the next one.
Trustee Peterson?
I don't have anything.
Okay. So the the ask is, do we want this on the next agenda? And that would be an indication from the entire board. And I think trustee Mason has a valid point on the life safety code, which would be a requirement of it being on the agenda. But if that issue is satisfied, does the board have any objective to this being on the next agenda?
No.
Trustee Berman?
Can you say that one, that last, the very last part? Can you say that again?
If if the life safety code issue is satisfied and.
It drives.
Correct or adjusted for, is it okay to have this on the agenda at the next meeting?
Trustee Mason, if it's.
If it's, if it's part, yeah, if if everything that 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 long as it's. If we, if there's going to be 45 people in there, and it's going to be 45 people in there, it's not going to be 70 people in there. And they got two entrances. I don't have, does everything change from the last meeting to this meeting? So I think this might have to come back to a county meeting because. Whatever changed in the last meeting and this meeting changed.
Trustee Peterson?
Well. If they can answer these questions for trustee Mason. And come to us with how many people are going to be in there? And where the doors are, where the exits are, the entrances. And so this is a flow of traffic that's okay. I don't see any problem in not putting it on the, on the village board and bringing it to the village board with those questions answered.
Okay, I can make sure that that question is answered before Wednesday when we would turn in the packet for the following meeting, so.
As long as it's clearly stipulated in our packet.
Yep.
So we have that.
Okay, very good.
Alright, thank you. Next item, somebody needs to get the mayor before we start. Oh, we're still on this. Thank you. I thought we discussed the facade grant that we were looking at the business, the business thing. And then the facade grant would follow up after that.
For clarification.
This is the follow up after that.
Yes, this is the second, second component, just for the record, this, there are two components of this proposal. There is. As Mr. Sorel summarized, there is actually a business grant, which was just reviewed and is some substance. There's a second component. There is a facade request by the owner, not the applicant, not 15 legs, but the owner of the property commonly known as nine one nine Main Street. So the second component of this proposal is to bring back the historic appearance of this building. As you know, the goal of the Bush's facade program is to restore the village's historical fabric. This building was modified back in the 1970s. PowerPoint, there's actually a picture of what the current appearance was back in 1970s. A full concrete veneer was added. That's the current appearance of the building as we speak. The applicant, the owner, I'm sorry, strike that, the owner of the building is seeking a facade grant in approximately $68,000. To allow them to restore the building to its historic appearance. That would basically require them to remove the existing veneer, stone, concrete, stone veneer. Actually a concrete material. They would restore the original brick. So you have in your packet, the historic pictures. My PowerPoint, the historic pictures of this original building on Main Street. Advocate would like to bring back the original red brick appearance of the building. In addition, they would like to remove the current aluminum storefront windows and bring back a new historic. Look to the building specifically to the actual storefront. Consistent with fifteen lakes business plan, the applicant is proposing basically accordion windows, which will allow outdoor dining. Consistent with what we've seen throughout the downtown on Main Street. So again, the applicant has identified in my staff report, I've identified a breakdown of the overall project. The ranging from approximately $10,000 to remove the veneer materials. A new glass door windows, restoration of the masonry. An actual new storefront windows and awning, general contracting would come to a total of approximately $137,786 for the overall project. Now for the record, staff is requesting a facade grant, again, maximum amount in all probability. Once the actual veneer is removed, this number will probably come down. The mason doesn't know the actual extent of the condition of the brick. So very likely their, the brick may be in very good condition. So that number as it relates to the cost. Uh, so that number as it relates to the cost of the brick restoration, uh, that number could in all probability come down substantially. Uh, so this, this requested facade grant could be substantially less than uh, the sixty-eight thousand dollars that's been requested this evening. So again, as sum and substance, this is the second component of this overall project. Not the applicant, Mr. Fifteen Lakes is looking for a, a business development grant for his business. The owner of the building is looking to uh, restore this building to its original uh, historic appearance. As I outlined before, there's approximately a hundred fifty thousand dollars in our um, in our facade um, budget this year. I think I identified that there was another major project coming in. This is the project we're talking about. As you recall, a month and a half ago, we approved the, out of very north, that facade grant for approximately forty-five thousand dollars. Um, so with, with this, if there's support for this requested facade grant, uh, there would still be approximately a little less than fifty thousand dollars left in the, in the facade program for this fiscal year to uh, help assist another facade grant. So with that, um, I'm looking for a general input and if the board be comfortable, uh, if there's general comfort level for this proposed facade on to bring it back to the next board meeting concurrent with uh, the Fifteen Lakes Business Grant. So with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Trustee Berman, do you have any questions?
No, not at this time.
Trustee uh, Bluthard?
Not at this time.
Trustee McNeil?
Also no questions.
Um.
Michael, so between, I'm alone. Maybe it's the heat, maybe it's that because I'm drinking hot coffee. Maybe it's the heat, I'm drinking hot coffee. So I got a figure in my packet of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. What's that figure for?
Four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That was the original overall buildout, I believe, of the cost of the interior of the project.
Hey, so they want half that?
No, again, remember the business, the, the business grant that was just discussed in the previous presentation is completely separate from facade grant. For that, again, we're covering twenty percent of that cost, okay, for the interior buildout. What's coming before you, what I'm presenting is only for the exterior of facade.
Exterior is one thirty-nine.
Correct.
Sideways, so I'm, I'm reading, I gotta tilt my head sideways. So one thirty-nine, so how much is the other one on, on the end, on the?
There, well, again, for the record, they're requesting a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars from the village for approximately a four hundred and whatever it was, fifty.
So we're at total both of them together.
A little less than two hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred thousand dollars. So we had two businesses spend on two million, two point some million dollars to get two hundred. Now. Is this, is this even close to their budget? I don't.
Well, again, for the record, this, this is within the facade grant's budget. Um, it's, it's actually an extensive facade grant renovation. It is bringing the building back to its original appearance. Um, consistent with what, you know, this is actually less than what we did for Station Fifty-One as it relates to um, the facade grant that was over a hundred thousand dollars. As we recall.
A hundred and thirty-nine.
That's total.
Total, but I see undercover dish, dish machine. Mine's, my packet's monkeyed up here. Is I see a table mount that equals the hundred and thirty-nine. I don't know what I'm reading here in the packet.
Again, I think it's staff report.
Four refrigerator, that's not outside.
Yes, I think my staff report comes to approximately a hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. To be fair, the numbers have been modified. They've actually come down, come down a little bit from the original numbers. Um, but approximately a hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars, the applicant is looking, consistent with our facade program. Advocate's looking for half of that, which comes to a little less than seventy thousand dollars.
But what I'm saying is I don't see the construction figures in my, in, in this packet.
They're broken down in the second page of my staff report. You'll see that there's.
I don't see that. My, my figures I'm showing steam table, heat lamp equal a hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
I'm sorry, that, that's the buildout.
Trustee Mason, I think you're looking at the interior renovations that were discussed.
Yes, for the buildout, that's the interior buildout.
Eighty-nine?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, so I gotta go backwards?
So if you go, if you look at the second page of my staff report, trustee Mason, you'll see approximately ten thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars for removal of the full stone.
I went forward, then I'm gonna go backwards in the report. Now I see it. So I apologize for my ignorance.
We presented backwards. It's not your ignorance.
Oh, it's backwards in the packet. Okay.
Are you through?
Yes.
Trustee Peterson?
I, um, I don't have any problem with having this on the uh, agenda for the next meeting. If it's all stipulated exactly what we're looking at. I'd, I'd love to see it.
Great.
Love to see another restaurant.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Now do I have permission to ask the mayor to come back in?
During the meeting.
I'll go get him.
That's fine. They, they presented the. Yeah. Well, who's, who's in charge of this meeting?
That was me. I didn't catch what they were doing until I started scrolling back and forth.
No.
Is that what the gavel's used for? I'm sorry.
He's gonna show this.
Was slated to go in. Every, everything's gonna match.
Well, it doesn't. Well, I, I, who borrowed it all up?
All right, we're back. All right.
Last item on the agenda um, is a request uh, to dedicate a uh, park bench to uh, Buddy Mahalovich Albane. Um, petitioners are here. Um, this is on the cow because this is um, I believe the uh, first request for uh, anything in the new park. So staff have been looking for the board to chime in. Um, you know, if. If the, if there are going to be these dedications in the park, there's pictures of the bench. Uh.
Yeah, your honor, I just thought it might be good to have a picture of the benches that are slated to go in. That is the furniture package that will be um, part of that park. So just so you know what, what is slated to go in.
So, so Jim, do you want to present this or uh, the petitioner? Okay, so every, you can see in the packet, there's a request um, from the petitioner for the um, bench proposal in the park. Um, we do have a, a bench or dedication program. Mary Uya, you were talking about this to staff this morning. You know more about this, this procedure than I do.
So people that would like to have a memorial bench, they put it, put in an application to the Parks and Rec with um, their reasoning. And I, as you know, we've done them, just the last one was uh, Don Skidmore's bench on Skidmore Drive. But it's a wooden slated with engraving in that. Those are the benches going forward and any of the parks or their location. When a petitioner petitions, they petition a park or a location, and then we bring it, I bring it to you guys for approval of their location and where they want it, and you say yes or no. This being different because the benches that we have been using are not what is going in that park. And they added that they would wish to have it at that park. So it's something totally up to you guys. If that's what you want to do, is to continue memorial benches throughout that park? Or move it to another park?
All right, uh, discussion for the board. Anything on this end?
Not anything yet, yeah.
Brent?
Yeah, I do. Um, first, I have no objection to them having their bench or anything like that. But I just have some general questions about the new development park, whatever you want to call it. Are we gonna have a discussion at any point about, you know, the, the bench? I mean, we, we see those two drawings that they presented here. They're different than the current memorial benches that are out there, so we're not talking about throwing one of those into the new park. Correct? I mean, everything's gonna be matching, is I'm assuming in the new park. So I think we really should have a, a discussion, not regarding this, um, but regarding how we're gonna do any of these dedications in the new park. Um, and as well as trees and anything else we're offering in there. If we're gonna do a, a program to help fund some of any new tree plantings or anything like that? Or how we want to move forward on it in general for that new facility. But in regards to general application, I have no objections whatsoever. It's just, I don't want to start putting the old type benches in with all the new benches. I want it to all look uniform.
So I guess what um, staff was looking for direction too is, um, are we going to say there's twenty benches? Are we going to continue to offer these memorial benches throughout that whole park? With, you know, where does that start and end? Are we gonna, you know, do a dedication on everything? Are we just gonna have a limited number? Are we not gonna do it in that park?
So I think, I, I think it's a way to offset some of the costs of these benches and trees and everything else. If we were to offer some type of program going into the park, but that would be for another discussion, but.
Sure. Um, what do uh, these benches are about?
Twenty-three hundred, the ones we currently use right now.
Okay, and the new ones are three higher? Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, I just want to open this discussion. Uh, trustee McNeil, anything, any on this?
No objections to this bench. I guess I want to know how many benches are going in the new park? And I don't know if we know that information out of the, okay, just kind of curious, like trustee uh, Bluthard had said. Yeah.
I mean, based, based on it that they wanted in the new park, we have some time to.
Sure.
Decide, but I mean, I.
I mean, obviously the uh, the request for the bench is usually always um, accepted. Uh, whether, you know, in, in the existing locations. So now we just have to figure out the philosophy, if we're gonna do the same thing in this park? Or yes, there's a bench, but it's gonna be in a different park.
That's, yeah, I think that's what we were, I was saying.
Okay, um, trustee Pierce?
I'm so confused. Are we debating the park benches? Are we debating the policy on the park benches? Are we debating whether we're gonna let uh, the Albane family uh, put a bench in the park?
We're gonna allow, well, it's if, if it, if we're gonna allow dedicated items in this park. I mean, we're starting that discussion so that um, we know, because we may get twenty requests. You may have a label on every single thing in the park, every tree, every playground equipment. We just want, we want to know what's the board's philosophy on this park if we're gonna do that.
But they're, they're here tonight.
Yeah, no, I, I, of course.
Are we wasting their time being here tonight to discuss what our policy is going forward?
No, because it's a committee, it, it was specifically requested for this park. Um, originally it was put on the um, regular business agenda for a vote. Okay, but because this is new and a new location, I, I personally thought the board would like to have the opportunity to just discuss the philosophy on if it would go there or if we say, you know, no, it's just gonna go in the park, the spots that are already on the application. And obviously there's.
I would be curious if they'd want to tell us.
Sure, sure. Yeah, they could, yeah. Do you want to, do you want to say anything about the request or um, Jim regarding this? And um, when you get up there, we have to have you state your name for the record.
Jim Mahalovich Senior.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, we thought, you know, our mom just passed away in May. And being a mother of seven children and being a resident of Antioch for fifty-five years would be a nice gesture on our behalf to purchase a bench. But we thought with the new park, that would be a, a prime place to put it. Um, but obviously it's up to the board if they're gonna allow dedicated benches or trees or whatever.
In, in the park, yeah, in the new park. Okay, um, any questions or uh, anything else on this side for, Ed, did you have anything on this or go to Mary?
I think, I think, I think, you know, we got a park thirty-million-dollar project. I think, I think we should, I love Jim, I, I love the Mahalovich. I think we should bring this back and discuss because, because we're gonna get a lot of butthurt feelings if we, if we just sit here and make a decision and we exclude people from the park and say, why didn't I get a bench? Because there's some great people that came through Antioch, that put a lot of dedication in the Antioch, first paramedic of Antioch. You know, go down the list, and they don't get a bench, you're gonna get some butthurt feelings. So we better get a policy uh, in that park before we just say, oh, you can have a, you can have a bench, but you can't have a bench. Uh, we better have, you know, all due respect, Jim. I think, because you know, it just come into mind, first paramedic of Antioch, first paramedic in the state of Illinois, Dan Jodinski. She deserve a bench? You know, in my opinion, I served in the rescue squad ten years. I think the guy deserves a bench. Who's gonna get him a bench? I'm not gonna say, but for a hundred dollars, I'm cheap. So, but, you know, guy like that, funeral home and whatnot, you don't want people butthurt over because they didn't get a bench. So we, we should bring this back and discuss policy. Because you don't want, you don't want people hurt feelings. That's not our, and, and I think that's fair to everybody, you know, how do we make, and it's, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of thinking.
Right. I mean, it is a three-thousand-dollar expense.
Yeah.
That a lot of people want.
There's some great people, you know, like Steve Smouse.
Yeah.
He, he did the cemetery, volunteered at the cemetery because of the cemetery, got melanoma. Does he deserve a bench? I don't know. You know, it, it's, it's stuff, it's stuff that we got, as a board, we should discuss. I, I, I think jumping to, jumping to stuff, you know, Jesus, a lot of people did volunteer work in, in this town.
Right.
Got paid for nothing, and, and people, you know, do they, are they memorialized? Just because someone's got money, doesn't mean that they're in front of it, someone that doesn't have money, but they did thirty years of service.
Trustee Peterson, I know you had your hand up.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. I would love to see a match there for her. Um. That, I think that we should look at this park. There, there are going to be, I don't know how many benches, maybe twenty in, in the entire park perimeter. Uh, I don't see a problem at all with a little tiny plaque on the back of a bench with someone's name and the years that they lived in Antioch. Maybe there could even be a QR code on that where you could hit it and tells you a little bit about Bunny Mahalovich. Because I could tell you a lot about Bunny Mahalovich. She's a great person and did a lot for our town. Did a lot for the schools. She was a very present mother in this town. And I don't have a problem with, I mean, we can discuss this at the committee of the whole, but we're talking, we're not talking about some different type of bench or moving them or adding more. But a little brass, brass plaque on a bench, I don't care if they're on every, every bench out there. There are a lot of people in this town. That's what Antioch is about. I mean, everyone volunteered. Everyone came out and worked every picnic we had and every festival we ever had. There were the same people everywhere. And I, you know, yeah, let's, if, if their families come to us and want a brass plaque on a, on a bench. Yeah, and if, and if they're all taken, and we can tell them we can put one over on Lake Street or we can talk. I don't know. I mean, you know, I, I think that there's enough spaces in this town to, um, we've got a a, a memorial going up too, Veterans Memorial, and there's a lot of veterans in this town that, you know, their names could be on there. I'm just saying that I don't have a problem with putting people's names on benches or trees at this new park. That's why we're here. That's who we are.
I'll go back around again.
Thank you.
Uh, trustee Berman?
Um, I don't have a problem with it at all. Um, I from what it sounds like, I know that there's, you know, things that need to be worked out because it's a new park. But you, you, you did come here and you did follow the process, proper process um, for that. And um, I mean, everybody else has to do the same thing. You were just the first to do it, so. for that and, I mean, everybody else has to do the same thing. You were just the first to do it, so. As I said, I don't have a problem with it, so.
Trustee Boothard?
Yeah, um, I, I definitely think and I agree with trustee Mason that we need to have a further discussion because we have a couple of different issues here related to the other benches and so forth. It's, we're already, we're buying these benches for this park. The other benches were bought and added to facilities and we had a higher cost for that. So from a perspective of someone wanting to memorialize their family member on one of these benches, like what you're talking about with the plaques, our cost isn't as, as sufficient as the whole bench. I mean, we're, we're buying that bench already. So I think we need to have a discussion about a policy and procedure and a cost for what we, if we wanted to have it on the benches and have trees or whatever else at the new park so that the residents do know what's involved in getting it at the new park if they want one. It's a little different than when they're adding it to another park. We weren't planning on putting a bench there. They have to pay the full cost. In this case, I mean, I think we should take a look at it, take the time. Obviously, they're number one on the list because they've come in with this. And then, once we decide as a board, then go with it. And, and, and put it out there for everyone. And you're right, there might be, there's hundreds of people that are worthy of it. How many are willing to pay for it or, you know, want to put their name on the list? You know, that's something else. So.
All right, thank you, trustee McNeil. Do you have anything?
Funny, sounds like a wonderful one. I'm so sorry for your loss and I'm interested in this. I really don't have any objection. But piggybacking off of trustee Boothard, I am curious, you know, how many benches? What will our policy be? I think moving forward, we should have a plan and I don't know about trees and things. I, you know, our park over by the sawmill, I love that park, but there's lots of names and plaques and will that fit in with the aesthetics? I just don't know without really fleshing that out, but for this, I'm, I'm open to it and I'm very sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Trustee Pierce?
I, I think we do need to have a policy in place to include the fact that if somebody wants to dedicate a bench to their family member, they should pay for the whole bench. Not the village pay for it and then they put a, pay a fee to put a plaque on it. It's a, it's a family bench that has their family, family member's name on there. I don't think we should be in a position of figuring out who deserves a plaque and who doesn't deserve a plaque. Because there may be people who hate Scott Pierce and never want to see his plaque there, and other people who love Scott Pierce and want it on every bench. I don't know. But, and so if we go through and decide who likes who and who deserves it more than this person or that person, I think that's a mistake. I think it's a, here's what our policy is. You want a bench, you have to pay for it and these are how many benches we have. Once they're paid for, they're paid for. And then we have to designate other locations. I, I don't want to be in the position of butthurting one person over the other person. I, I don't think that's my, my role in life. So.
All right, thank you. Anything else on this end over here? All right, so, um, we'll, and again, you don't have to come back to the next meeting. I, I think we put this on the next agenda for approval of the bench, subject to the discussion on the location. We'll put a, a, on our committee of the whole meeting, a discussion about where, where the, any dedication or naming rights starts and stop in the new park. And then if it goes in a way that there's gonna be none, then we'll work on getting a proper location, but I, I don't see any issue with this moving forward, so. All right, thank you for coming here and.
Thank you.
Sticking out the heat.
Yeah.
All right, um, any other items, anything for executive?
I just forgot one.
Sure, go ahead.
I ran into Debbie Retner today at the Veterans Memorial. She tells me it is moving forward. They are waiting for civil engineering and surveying to be done by Manheart and the bowlers are working actively to have them included as the designated fundraising choice for the Great Lakes Contractors Association. And sometime in September, and I'll get the date, there, that, that association has a cookout event at the Lake County Fairgrounds and Debbie was like, people should stop in and, and show their appreciation because this will be the designated place. So once I get that information a little bit further fleshed out, I'll let you know. And that's also being kind of coordinated by Tim Maribel. Tim Maribel, he's a resident of Antioch, so the more people hear about this, the more people want to get involved.
Okay, thank you. Mary, do you have your hand up? Okay, um, anyone have any requests to go into executive session for any reason? All right, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, a roll call please.
Yes.
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 All right. Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, meeting's adjourned at seven forty-five.